East Fishkill zoning board meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call? Mary Semenera.
James Meyer.
Aziz Essen.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We have an issue related to our December meeting in that a schedule that we approved last year calls for us to meet the day after Christmas. And I believe at this time last year, we had said we would discuss it closer to. One of the things we have to think about is not just our own schedules, but the fact that a lot of people do go away. And we want neighbors who might have an interest in an application to be able to come and comment on things. So we also have tonight the schedule for next year, which would mean our December meeting next year, being the fourth Tuesday, would actually be on Christmas. So I'm going to suggest that we make a change to this year's calendar and in adopting next year's calendar, that we actually just forego the December meeting if the board. It's the time of year when applications, generally speaking, people are not going to start construction in January or February. So I think we can, in the interest of making sure that neighbors are properly noticed and given appropriate time to be able to get here, I think we can forego that meeting if the board members agree. The only concern we would have is, you know, if in fact it snows in January, then things just get postponed for a meeting. But meeting the day after Christmas just doesn't really make sense or Christmas next year, so.
So you're proposing, making it part of the same package or two separate motions?
Well, we have to, we would have to amend this year's calendar to eliminate this December meeting, okay?
So let's just talk about this year's. So I agree with you that this year, it's a day after Christmas and it's a short week. And as you mentioned, the neighbors might not be there. Plus, we may not have enough applications to process. And yes, it does move some, it does create a hardship for the local folks to move it into maybe January and if it snows, into February, et cetera. So I think for this year, we should give, we should, you know, forego this year's meeting and see, assess it in January and then, and then, and so, well, let's just discuss that one first.
Okay. The other thing is if Pam, right now, has the opportunity to tell people, is they're picking up the applications, that there will be no December meeting, then there won't be any.
Yeah.
Okay. Then the expectation that they'll be dealt with in January would be, okay, that she'd make it known right now.
In my position on both this year and next year would be if, again, they have advanced notice, we wouldn't be meeting. So applicant should be able to plan around it. But if we had some big issue before us, and again, in consideration of other meetings, we could always plan something in November. So sometime in December. So I have no objection on both this year and planning for next year that we do away with the December meeting.
Okay. The other thing, just the other point is the fact that Tuesdays, this room is booked for the first and third Tuesday. Our attorney has a conflict on the second Tuesday. Wednesdays, the room is booked for court.
I understand it's going to be very difficult.
You know what I mean? So we'd actually have to find another location in the event that we actually did want to meet.
Yeah, we've had to do that a couple of times in the past.
Right.
So I understand that. So that's why, again, I have no objection for this year and next year to not have a December meeting. And again, if emergencies present, we'll deal, we'll wrestle with that issue at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I think we can forego the December meeting. And as Jim said, if we need to, we can adjust into a different meeting location.
Mm-hmm. I'm fine. Okay. So because we actually do approve our schedule with a formal motion, so do I have a motion to amend the 2017 schedule to eliminate the December meeting and to adopt the 2018 schedule that's presented on the agenda?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good, thank you. Now, we do have one set of minutes to approve that I do want to compliment Lisa. They were very, very good. I really made very, very few changes to them. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 26th?
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained, that's the one I wasn't present for.
Okay. And, okay. In terms of our agenda for this evening, item number one is a decision, but there's actually no news on this one. This is the one that we've gone to New York State DEC jointly with the planning board to request their consideration of not allowing this building to go into the buffer. So there's no news on this. We just have to keep it on our agenda because it's, you know, obviously, there's a, there's a decision being waited for by the applicant. But I think right now, no news is good that they might, DEC might actually really be considering it, so. All right. So with that being said, let's move on to our agenda. The first part of our agenda is public hearings. These are applications that this board has already had an application to review and then we'd invite the neighbors in to be able to tell us of any concerns you might have related to these applications. The second part of our meeting, our reviews, are generally new applications or things that we're seeing for the first time. So we generally work through those first before we invite the neighbors in. There would not be any public comment on those applications. So with that being said, I'm going to move right on to item number two, Appeal 3826. Colley, Dean Colley is requesting a 14-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming house, a one-foot sideline variance for an existing 20-foot by 26-foot deck, a five-foot sideline variance for an existing five-foot by 26-foot deck, a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing nine-foot by nine-foot deck, a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing four-foot by 13-foot deck, a seven-foot sideline variance for an existing 11-foot by 11-foot deck, a 29-foot front line and a 17-foot sideline variance for an existing 15-foot by 20-foot garage pursuant to sections 194-94 and 194-107B2 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good evening. So we've discussed this application multiple times as a board, but this is our first time that we're actually opening it up for public comment as a public hearing. So just to get some information onto the record, some of the review. This application first came to us probably in spring, early 2017, with multiple, multiple variances, not that there's not multiple still here, but with many more variances. And recognizing that the applicant actually owned the adjacent lot, we requested that the applicant, through his professional, Brian, go back to the planning board and seek a lot line realignment to be able to minimize some of those variances. The applicant did, in fact, do that. He was successful with getting a lot line realignment that minimized and reduced some of the variances that were required. Over the course of many years, the applicant has built numerous decks and additions onto his home. The home is on a private road and so, you know, I gather, for whatever reason, he felt he had the opportunity to do that. So at this point, I understand the applicant is looking to sell the house and needs to clean up the issues related to it. At our last meeting, the, Brian, you did agree that the applicant would take down the pool. We didn't necessarily talk about timing, but, you know, we can make it a condition of our variance if it has not already been taken down. But I think we want to recognize the fact that you did work with us. We did ask you to go to the, do that lot line alignment, which, you know, required some additional expense on the applicant's part to be able to do that, to be able to reduce this, recognizing that even the lot that's adjacent to this lot was not the greatest layout in terms of how the lot was configured. So it did even require some adjustment on that part, too. So with that being said, is there anything you want to add?
No. I think you identified everything you've gone through.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
None by me.
So is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against the request of Dean Colley?
Mr. Paul.
No, the pool's going to come, they agreed they would take the.
Is it down, did he say?
It's not down yet, right?
I don't think we took.
It's not down yet.
Not down yet, okay.
So we have to make a condition.
Any timeframe that you're going to take the pool down?
Uh, sooner than later, before the winter hits.
I'm not seeing an actual address.
Is summer ever going to end? (laughing). Yeah, but where is it in here?
Next 30 days, 60 days?
Let's do 45.
Okay.
Just in case.
Okay. All right. So is there anyone here who speak, wishes to speak for or against the application from Dean Colley requesting a number of variances related to his home on, what's the road?
Nine Bertacci.
Tachian.
Nine Bertacci Lane, thank you. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Jim, you want to take this?
Okay. This is in reference to Appeal number 3826 by Dean Colley, again, seeking a 14-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, a one-foot sideline variance for the existing 20-by-26-foot deck, a five-foot sideline variance for the existing five-foot by 26-foot deck, a foot, Dean Foot, I'm sorry, a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing nine-foot by nine-foot deck, a 15-foot sideline variance for the existing four-foot by 13-foot deck, a seven-foot sideline variance for the existing 11-foot by 11-foot deck, a 29-front line and a 17-foot sideline variance for the existing 15-foot by 20-foot garage pursuant to sections 194-94 and 194-107B2 of the zoning ordinance. The premises located at Nine Bertacci Lane Homes and the resolution being offered by zoning member James Meyer, whereas applicant has applied for the above stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision in order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as this dwelling and garage were built in 1940 and the decks were added on through the years at appropriate, at appropriate point of egress from the home. Additionally, the applicant did obtain a lot line realignment to reduce the number and sizes of the variances requested. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variances upon the condition that the swimming pool be removed within 45 days of the date of this decision. I think that's it. Yep.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All, sorry, votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Now you'll deal with the building department.
Hmm.
All right. Yep, have a good night. Item number three, Appeal 3851 Lopez, Jason Lopez, 17 Gilatly Drive, Wapengers Falls, requesting an eight-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment and a six-foot sideline variance for an existing pool deck pursuant to section 194-95 and 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
So last month, we had the opportunity to review your application. You have installed an above-ground pool, thinking that the deck that's attached to the structure of the pool only needed to meet the patio requirements, setback requirements, which is only a 15-foot requirement.
Correct.
Because it is a deck, it's off the ground, it does in fact have to meet the deck requirements, which is the 25 feet, which is what puts you here, needing that extra requirement. My understanding for what you also told us was you expected to be able to put the pool equipment under the deck, but because of the circulation required for the heater and for the equipment, that it really is not the best place for it to be under. And so it really needs to be out. And so that brings it, again, into the setback.
Correct.
But it's not visible from your neighbors. You actually had some letters from your neighbors?
Yes, I got a letter from the neighbor on either side of my house.
Okay. I have two of them here.
Yeah, there are two letters. Yeah, it should be two of them.
Okay, all right. So is there anything else you want to add? Oh, let's talk about your, the ground, your topography, your, your house is on an incline, so flat areas are very limited.
Right.
In terms of where, in even your backyard, you said you have.
The backyard is two levels.
Levels.
The higher level is very, a lot of tree roots. And then the lower level, there's one big tree in the middle of the yard that they were scared to dig just to hit the roots.
Right.
Where, so we had to put it where it was.
Right. And so again, the pool itself meets the setback requirements.
Yes.
We're not looking for any.
The pool itself meets the setback requirements. It is just the equipment that we misjudged the size when we purchased it and the misunderstanding with whether it was a deck or a patio.
Right.
And it being 15 feet versus 25 feet.
Questions or comments from board members?
Uh, there's a shed that you said you're going to remove in 30 days. Has the shed been removed? Not yet, but it will be this weekend.
Okay. Anything else? So there are two letter, letters, I'll read into the record. One is dated September 25th, 2017, to whom it may concern. I, William Mercurio, reside at 19 Gilatly Drive in the town of East Fishkill. I am aware that my nation, neighbor, Jason Lopez, who resides at 17 Gilatly Drive in the town of East Fishkill, has applied for a variance for the location of his newly-installed pool equipment. I would like to express my support of the variance being granted regarding the location of the pool equipment, including their filter system and pool heater. Thank you for your concern in the matter. I can't, well, he addressed him, his name in the, in the letter itself. And then it's a very similar letter. It's also dated September 25th, to whom it may concern. My name is Richard King and I reside at 15 Gilatly Drive. I am aware that my neighbor, Jason Lopez, who resides at 17 Gilatly Drive, has submitted an application to be granted a variance for the location of his newly-installed pool equipment, including a filter system and pool heater. My property shares the property line with the Lopez family and I am not opposed to this variance being approved. Thank you for your concern in the matter. Okay. So is there anyone here else who wishes to speak for or guess, or against the application from Jason Lopez, 17 Gilatly Drive, for a sideline variance for the existing pool deck and pool equipment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is Appeal number 3851 from Jason Lopez, for an eight-foot sideline variance for an existing, for existing pool equipment and a six-foot sideline variance for an existing pool deck pursuant to section 194-95 and 194-94 of the zoning ordinance at 70 Gilatly Drive in Wapengers Falls, resolution offered by zoning board member Mary Semenera. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above-stated variances and the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the pool itself meets the required setbacks and the pool deck is attached rather than on the ground as a patio, which would have required a smaller setback. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant has a two-level backyard and the lower part of it where the pool is, is the most level and has the least amount of trees. In addition, there is a retaining wall behind the pool, the integrity of which would be affected if moved. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The applicant had to remove a bush between him and his neighbor's property, but he will replace it in the spring. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above-stated variance, subject to the following condition. The shed in the rear of the property will be removed within 30 days of this decision.
Is there a second?
Second.
So votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set.
Okay, thank you so much.
Have a good night. Building department. Item number four, Appeal 3852 Milano, Janice Milano, 104 Lake Walton Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 16-foot front line variance for proposed deck stairs, a four-foot front line variance for a proposed eight-foot by 12-foot porch, and a four-foot front line variance for a proposed addition, and a three-foot sideline variance for the proposed addition pursuant to section, sections 194-94, 194-17, and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Good evening.
Aye.
So we had the opportunity to review your application last month. You are on Lake Walton Road, like the second house past Brown Road.
Setback, yeah.
Yes. We had an interesting discussion about fences.
We did. And I've talked to one of my neighbors already.
Okay. Because one of the things that surprised us was the fact that you had fences crossing your property in the rear of your yard at weird angles, but.
None of them are mine.
Right. And your sense was that they were there when you bought the property and et cetera. But your house, as you mentioned to us last month, is like the second smallest house on this street.
And now that other one is bigger because they just lifted it the other day.
Well, that's the one that's in the air, see?[1166.15][1166.15](laughing). I drove by on Saturday, I'm like, there's a house in the air. It was a little weird, you know, not expecting to see that.
Yeah, it was kind of different, huh?
So, yeah, so now you're going to have the, the smallest house. But anyway, the.
Hopefully not.
Your house is a little strangely configured in that off to the right is this like little outbuilding kind of thing that's attached at.
A kitchen.
It's your kitchen, exactly. You said people literally walk into your kitchen.
Yes.
And it's setback, so what you're proposing to do is really kind of change the front of the house to expand your kitchen, give yourself an entryway. It's, it's not going to go any closer to the side, to your neighbor on that side, right?
It's, um, yeah, we're going to, because we're going to extend on that side.
Extending.
So where that little tiny piece is, it's going to the, so if you're facing it, it's going to the right.
Okay.
So I'm going to add on.
You have, you have more side space on that side.
Yes. I think I need, it's just a little over a foot off my property line.
And a three-foot sideline variance for the proposed addition.
Right. But, but some, some of it is what's there now as opposed to.
Right.
Okay, because it's, the way the addition is, but the way that little room is set up right now, it's actually pretty close to the, to the fence line, anyway. But again, if somebody drives by, they're, they're really, their eyes are really drawn to the, all that white fence of your neighbor's property.
Yes.
Which is, it's a nice-looking attractive fence, so it's not necessarily.
One passes me, even though I tell them where I live.[1251.65][1251.65](laughing).
I, you're, because your eyes are drawn to the structures that are, you know, more in front of you. So, you know, from a, the perspective of reviewing it as useful, practical space that's going to improve the aesthetic.
Yes.
Of your house, from the view of the street.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's only going to be an improvement. So, and, you know, you have a cute little house now, but it's, I do believe it will be an improvement.
Nine hundred and 20 square feet.
Is there anything else you wish to add?
No.
Is there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of Janice Milano, 104 Lake Walton Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 16-foot front line variance for proposed deck stairs, a four-foot front line variance for a proposed eight-foot by 12-foot porch, and a four-foot front line variance for a proposed addition, and a three-foot sideline variance for the proposed addition? So.
Motion to close them?
Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
This is Appeal number 3852 for 16-foot front line variance for proposed deck stairs, a four-foot front line variance for a proposed eight-by, eight-foot by 12-foot porch, and a four-foot front line variance for a proposed addition, three-foot sideline variance for a proposed addition pursuant to section 194-94, 194-17, and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied for the above-stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt the standard decision in order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the addition will actually improve the aesthetics and increase the functionality of the house. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means and the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above-stated variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set. Now you'll deal with the building department.
Right. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Have a good evening. Just pass that one down to Pam, I just want to make sure she has the language that Jim added. Okay. Item number five. Appeal 3853 Capola, Grant Capola, 2304 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to allow an eight-foot chain link fence to be installed as a pool enclosure in his front yard pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good evening. So last month, we had the applicate, reviewed the application and you have a 99-acre parcel that you, you're, Mr. Capola is building on, okay? And apparently, because men, there's, a lot of the neighbors have been, on Schluter Drive, have been using the property for years for, as a walking area. Apparently, the trespassing has continued and so you're looking to reduce, do what you can to reduce the ability of neighbors to be able to go in and use the property, much less use the pool.
Right.
Because as you mentioned to us, you've encountered neighbors in the pool or people in the pool. And so there is no intention at this point of Mr. Capola to subdivide that property?
No, he never will.
Okay. He never will? In the event that he ever does, is there, would there be any issue if we were to ask that that fence, that may then become visible, would be reduced?
Sure.
Okay. Because granting an eight-foot fence is tough and it's, you know, especially when, I get it, nobody else is going to see it, but it is still within the front line of the house the way the, the house is set on the property and the way Route 52 is.
Right.
Nobody sees it from Route 52 and the Schluter Drive right now is being used as a construction entrance, so it's some.
It's only being held open for the fence people.
Okay, yeah. So, but it's, that's what I'm saying, at some point, it's going to be, just that use of that road's going to be discontinued. So again, nobody on Schluter Drive should be able to see it as well. And your, the point that you made to us last month was that putting a more decorative fence would actually call more attention.
Right.
And make the fence much more visible along the tree line, but using a black vinyl-clad chain link fence actually would blend in much better. And unless you're, you know, within 50 feet of it or so, you probably wouldn't even see it anyway.
Right.
Okay. Anything else you want to add? Questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
No.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Grant Capola, 2304 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to allow an eight-foot chain link fence to be installed as a pool enclosure in his front yard? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I do have one comment on a proposed decision on the, at the end there, it says the continuation of the location must be reviewed and reapproved. I would suggest we change "reapproved" to "decision made," because we may not wanna reapprove it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, why? You wanna go read?
Boy, you're really ducking it, huh? That's no problem. Okay, then, in reference to Appeal 3853 by the applicant Grant Capola, reference to a four-foot variance for a proposed eight-foot chain link pool enclosure fence to be installed in front of the house pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance, located at 2304 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, with resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, and whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as this property is just shy of one hundred acres in size, and the proposed fence is over eight hundred feet back from the Route 52 on a wooded lot, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will have, will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above stated variance, subject to the following condition. This variance was granted primarily because this parcel is approximately one hundred acres and in one ownership. Upon any proposal to subdivide this parcel, the continuation of this fence and this location must be reviewed and decision made by the ZBA prior to file a final subdivision approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. You're all set.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, have a good night. Oh, you gave her the language?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, in our last public hearing of the evening, Appeal 3854 Aspicia, Nancy Aspicia, Ten Cliff Court Homes, is requesting an expansion of a non-conforming structure in order to build a six-foot addition and stairs onto the existing deck pursuant to note eleven of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. So we had the opportunity again to review your application last month. You're not looking for any great addition here, you're just, you know, you're just looking to be able to add a, the deck itself on, right?
Right, and then, right.
And the stairs to that, yes.
Extended, right. Addition, an addition.
Okay, so it's, it's, it is an actual addition, not just, not just a deck, okay. I gotta pull out your application here. Oops. So that's, um, again, there was, because of the minimal impact, it's really, to be able to get appropriate stairs, I don't think that we really had any major issues when we reviewed it last month. So is there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
So you're, you're looking for this to be a secondary egress. That's one of the issues that you really wanted to address, was being able to give yourself an appropriate alternate egress.
So really, she, I wasn't here for the review, so this is just because it's a non-conforming structure already? Is that what I'm understanding?
I'm busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a change in the sideline.
Yeah, but...
That's right, because this is along eighty-four, and it's not impacting eighty-four.
Right.
Thank you, we should get that into the record.
Rest of the building away from the property line.
Away, exactly.
Yes, so because of the law has changed in town, that needed the one hundred-foot buffer, that's, that became into play here for them. So that, the house itself now became a non-conforming. If this is not going on the side of eighty-four, it's actually going on the other side, but the existing house itself is now not in compliance.
So they really haven't, nothing to their fault, okay.
Right.
I understand now, thank you.
Thank you, I knew there was some...
We just wanna make sure everything is done properly.
Yep, okay. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the application of Nancy Aspicia, Ten Cliff Court Homes, requesting an expansion of a non-conforming structure in order to build a six-foot addition and stairs onto the existing deck? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is Appeal number 3854. Applicant is Nancy Aspicia, requesting an expansion of non-conforming structure in order to build a six-foot addition and stairs onto an existing deck pursuant to note eleven of the Schedule of Bulk Regulation, a resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as a proposed deck extension will be built to the north, not to be any closer to Interstate eighty-four. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the, as this lot abuts Interstate eighty-four and note eleven requires any structure to be hundred feet away from the buffer of the interstate. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeal, appeals hereby approves the above stated variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. You're all set. Now you just deal with the building department.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, have a good night. All right, so now we are on to reviews. So item number seven is Appeal 3855 Rin, Gerard Lynn, eighteen Smalley Lane, Stormville, requesting a fifty-four-foot front line variance for a proposed fourteen-foot by sixteen-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107B2 of the zoning ordinance.
How are you?
You, you had so much fun last time, you came back.
I know, I just wanted to come back. I missed you guys.
When you were here last time with your pool equipment, right?
Yes.
One of the things we actually talked about was the fact that you did have a shed on the property that did not look like it was in compliance. You said it was really old, you were gonna take it down and deal with it at some point in the future, so you're back. So what are you proposing to do now?
This is a shed for, in the front of the house, because there's no other...
Because of the topography of your lot, yes.
I mean, the house was set into a cliff, you know, the mountain, so there's really no other place. And I live on a private dirt road, so I wanna like put a tractor with a plow in there so I can maintain the road.
So is it connect, actually right off of the driveway?
It's pretty close to the dirt, to the gravel road, yeah. I mean, there's a small, like, buffer, maybe like, I don't know, ten or, maybe ten or twelve feet.
I mean, you have almost four acres of property. Isn't, don't you have another location where you can put the shed?
He's, he's got a very steep lot, and it's very wooded. We saw this as it related to his pool and the needing to be able to put the pool equipment and the gas tanks and stuff, that the, the gas company had to be able to pour in.
Okay, I remember it.
Yeah, so that's why he was just here, just a couple months ago.
I mean, it's pri, it's just all unusable land, like, from the back to the left is all mountain, and to the front, like where my septic is, after the septic, it just starts going up. So I just have a very, like, you know, minimal front yard with the driveway, and then there's no other...
So what's in the front, what's visible from Smalley Lane? Are you, is anybody gonna see this shed?
Yes.
They will, okay. How high is it, or is it at an evil level, elevation with the roadway?
Um, I would say same elevation, yeah.
Can you put some screening up? Are you gonna put some bushes in front of it? What color is it gonna be?
Actually, there is, there's forsythia that line the road, so that would block it, and I could put a few more. Yeah, so that, there would be some, some coverage.
At the, at the public hearing, if it goes forward, can you bring some photographs for the record so that it's very clear?
Yes.
Because this is a very unique situation to have
Okay.
A shed right in, in the front of the property.
Right.
So we need to be able to give a reason for it.
Okay. Yeah, I can definitely do that.
Thank you.
What's it gonna look like? What color? Is it gonna match the house, or is it going to blend, since it's so close to the road, is it gonna blend more with the green or, you know?
No, I'm gonna match the, I'll match the house, yeah.
And this is, the stone wall is there, it's existing, you're, to access it, you're gonna come through your property, not through that side road?
Correct, yeah, yep.
And the reason it's on a slant is because of the terrain, or?
I just kinda put it at that angle so I can, like, see it from my house better. I don't know. I mean, I could change that, it's not a problem, I guess.
Does it actually minimize the impact of it by having it at an angle? What, if you're on Smalley Lane, would I see more of it if it was...
You would see more.
Perpendicular to?
Yeah, you would see that, yeah.
As opposed to being at an angle, it gives you the opportunity to screen it a little bit better, and you'd actually see less because you're seeing a corner of it.
Right. At, at that spot right there, I had an existing playground for my kids, so that's where I was planning to put it, because that was the only place I could put a playground, so it's like...
Is that playground going away, or is that...
It's gone, it's been gone for years, yeah. They're older now, so...
Good answer.
Yeah, no, there's, no, there's nothing.
Okay.
Which, you gonna have, like, a garage door on it?
No.
What kinda doors?
Just standard, like, six-foot doors, I guess, to get like a tractor out or put a plow.
To maintain the road?
Right.
You're talking about just removing snow, then?
Yeah.
And they're gonna face towards the house, so is that what you're saying?
They'll be fit, yeah, like on the angle, yeah, like of my driveway and the house.
Okay.
I know he's got a tough lot, that's the...
Again, that's why we're having photographs would help.
Yeah, I'll definitely, next time I'll bring pictures.
But the visibility, how tall is it? It's just a normal standard shed?
Oh, yeah, basic, you know.
There's no second floor to it or anything like that, so, there's no floor and a half, it's just...
No, it's just a basic...
It'll be on a slab or on, on...
It'll just be on grade, on...
On grade?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not pouring any concrete or, just gravel, I'll put gravel down underneath.
What color is your house? How bright is that gonna be?
It's like a wicker, like a wicker color, tan.
Oh, okay, all right, so it's actually a brown?
Right.
Okay, so not, a bright white would be
No, it's not.
Even more visible, that's what...
Yeah.
So when the forsythia's gone and has brown, it'll match the brown of the forsythia?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, that makes sense, though, so, okay.
Motion to advertise?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, see you next month.
Okay.
Please bring some photographs and a neighbor's letter or anything
Okay.
To help support her.
All right, you got it, thank you.
Sure.
You still have your sign, or, from the last public hearing?
No, I don't have it.
Okay, Pam, you need your instructions sent from Pam? Item number eight, Appeal 3856 Ruka, Alfred Capella, Alfred Capelli, representing Albano Ruka, 24 Whites Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to add a second story to a detached garage built prior to 1985 pursuant to section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
And you are?
Albano.
I'm sorry.
I'm the owner of the house.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, you're not Al Capelli.
You're not Al Capelli, that's all.
No, no, Al Capelli.
That's what I was expecting.
Alfred is, is in Italy somewhere.
Pardon my confusion, but, you know.
He thought he maybe had a new associate or something.
Okay. Okay, so, so the reason you're here actually is because your garage was built prior to when the code changed, that you actually have the, had the ability to be able to put that second story on to your garage previously, so, but tell...
But it's not, it's not a second story, because I just heard that. It's, it's really a, a roof basically, that has dormers. The dormers is what, and I have the picture.
Is there any square footage upstairs? Is, is there gonna be stairs to get up there?
Well, yes, there will be stairs.
Okay, then it's a second story, even if it is dormers, okay? If there's gonna be any kind of finished, not even finished, if there's gonna be stairs and space up there, even just for storage?
This time, this time, we, Alfred had said that we are go, because the only, the, initially the idea was just to put the roof basically, because I had a flat roof that was collapsing.
Okay.
So he said, um, he'll, we'll put the roof, and then I said, for a matter of, as a matter of aesthetics, I wanted some dorm, dormers on, on the front.
Oh, yeah, they break up the roof line, sure.
And, and then he had mentioned that, we kinda came to the conclusion that down the road, maybe we, we would like, um, go for another permit to potentially make it into an accessory unit, but I told him, listen, now it's not the time, because it's, it's gonna require a lot more, more money. Let's just do the roof, I said, and then...
Well, just, if you may be thinking along those lines, one of the requirements would be that the square footage upstairs for an accessory apartment has to be at least six hundred square feet.
Okay.
Are you going to have that square footage up there?
I think it's bigger, because I think, yeah.
That's just something to think about if you're, you know, thinking along those lines.
Sure.
Because again, you're under the previous code, because this was built so long ago. All right, so, the garage, so the garage itself has a thirty-foot by thirty-foot footprint?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so what's the actual square footage upstairs gonna be? Do we know?
I was trying to figure out, twenty-three... You're not putting up sidewalks, you're putting like a twelve-twelve pitch on with dormers on.
Correct.
I'm not sure you're gonna have... How big is the garage?
Twenty-eight by twenty-three.
Uh, it's thirty by thirty, roughly.
Nine hundred, I don't know if you're gonna get six hundred square feet upstairs. Because you can't count all the nine, thirty by thirty, because you won't have the headroom. So you may wanna speak to Mr. Capelli about that.
Six hundred and forty-five square feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so he probably does get there, just get there, six forty.
Six forty-four.
But he won't have the headroom if it's a twelve-twelve pitch all the way down. Do you count all the way to the edge, then?
Well, according to the sketch that's here in the attic.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just kept measuring that.
Yeah, there's a, four plan where the...
In the back's gonna be a shed roof.
Oh, okay, that's where he gets it, yeah, okay.
Oh, the dormers are nice looking, okay.
I didn't write on it. That's why, that's where he gets it from, okay. I was thinking dormers, I wasn't thinking the extension, how high those dormers could, I thought they were just putting little...
Yeah, the back is higher.
So Mr. Capelli thought of that. Okay.
Motion to advertise?
Yes, I don't see...
I, uh, second, where am I?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Pam will give you your instructions for your sign and your advertising, and then we'll see you again next month.
Okay, excellent.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
And if you, if you've talked to any of your neighbors and any of them wanna give you a letter, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay?
Wonderful.
Uh, yes, you talk to...
Oh, right now?
Pam, she, yeah, she just has the instructions for you.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, and item number nine, Appeal 3857 Van Dyke, Mark Van Dyke, 3250 Route 52, Stormville, is requesting a one hundred thirty square foot variance for an existing four hundred and eighty square foot detached accessory structure pursuant to section 194-107D of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is the first we're seeing your application.
Yes.
If you don't mind taking us through, it says, it's an accessory structure.
Yeah.
This is a woodshed.
Yeah, I have a couple of pictures if you'd like.
Okay, great, that would be helpful to be able to see that. So is, it's, as a